Okay, it's now 5:01. This is the public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. To Chapter 551, Title 5, Section 551.041 of the Texas Government Code of the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice was given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville would conduct a regular meeting on Tuesday, October 6th at 5:00 PM via the WebEx teleconference meeting by logging on at the WebEx link posted on the City of Brownsville Agenda Center. The members of the public wishing to participate in the meeting hosted through WebEx teleconference will join at the numbers posted on the City of Brownsville Agenda Center. Members of the public who submitted a public comment form will be permitted to offer public comments as provided by the agenda and as permitted by the presiding officer during the meeting. A recording of the meeting will be made and will be available to the public in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Okay, we'll do a short roll call. Commissioner Cowan, I see him. Commissioner Veloski Pizana, I see her. Commissioner Hoel Mungia, I see him. Commissioner Gallin, I see her. Commissioner Petro, I see her. Okay, Commissioner Neese is on. And Mayor Mendez is on. So we've got everyone. So it is 5:03, and we can call the meeting to order.
Now call the meeting to order, thank you.
Okay, we will have the invocation by Pastor Brad Bird.
Let's pray. Father God, first of all, we thank you for the many blessings we have. The food we eat, the water we drink, the rain that we've had to water our crops. And Lord, we thank you for the blessings. We ask you now, Lord, to heal our nation. We ask you to heal our nation from this virus, from the White House to here in Brownsville and everyone around the nation. We ask you to heal our nation of the racism and the violence and bring us together respecting each other and loving each other. Lord, we ask you to draw all of our hearts to yours. And Lord, in doing so, help us to love each other, truly love each other, even those we disagree with. Help us to be able to speak truth in love. And Lord, we ask you to bring truth forth in our nation. Bring truth forth from the news media, whether they want to speak that or not. Bring truth from each politician, that's campaigning right now. And Lord, we thank you for your truth. And Lord, in this meeting here tonight, we thank you for our mayor and each commissioner and everyone presenting. We ask you to give all of us divine wisdom and direction. We ask that the outcome of this meeting be the best for the City of Brownsville and all of its residents, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. And now let's have a short moment of silence where we can all add our prayers to what has been spoken. Amen.
Amen, thank you, Brad. Thank you, Pastor, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is a proclamation for National Disability Employment Awareness Month, which is in the month of October 2020, Workforce Solutions of Cameron County. Mayor, did you want to read the proclamation?
Yes, thank you. This is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating October 2020 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Whereas people with disabilities are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and a strong economy. Whereas it is recognized that in the month of October, National Disability Employment Awareness Month raises awareness about disability employment issues. Whereas the month of October celebrates the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities. Whereas there will be activities in our community throughout this month that reinforce the value and talent people with disabilities add to our workplaces and communities. Whereas we affirm the great city of Brownsville's commitment to an inclusive community, and I call upon employers, schools, and other community organizations to observe this month with appropriate activities and to advance its important message that people with disabilities are equal to the task throughout the year. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby designate October 2020 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in Brownsville, Texas, and further encourage the residents of Brownsville, observe this month with appropriate activities and to advance its important message that people with disabilities are equal to the task throughout the year, done on the sixth day of October 2020. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present the proclamation. Do we have anybody here on this proclamation?
Hello, Mayor, yes. This is Larissa Luna. I'm with Texas Workforce Solutions Vocational Rehabilitation, and I'm proud and honored to accept this proclamation. National Disability Employment Awareness Month is a huge, a huge national movement that we get to spread awareness to not only our community, but a national recognition. This marks actually our 75th year, and then with the ADA, it marks the 30th year, so this is a big movement for us. We have events organized for the month of October. October 22nd, we will have a virtual employer forum event. So more information will be sent out to our employers and our community. But I just want to thank Mayor and Commissioners as well for this proclamation. Thank you.
Absolutely, Larissa. Thanks for coming, thanks for accepting this on behalf of the Texas workforce, and it's an honor and a pleasure really. And like the proclamation said, this is something that we really need to celebrate throughout the year, and I'm glad that some people have taken notice and are recognizing it. So thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Our next item is our public comment period. We have received one public comment form from Joe Tucker of 65 Alba, Brownsville, Texas. Joe, are you present? Okay, Mayor, I guess he is not on the line.
Okay, very good, thank you. We'll go ahead and proceed to the next item then.
Yeah, I spoke to him earlier, so I think the issue has been resolved.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, our next item is consent agenda items 1 through 8.
Do we have any motions on the item?
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Please note my abstention on that.
Oh, very good, Commissioner, I didn't hear you. Yes, sir. Laurie, can you please note Commissioner Neese's abstention?
Yes, sir, we're noting it.
Thank you.
All right, our next items are public hearings. Public hearing item number one, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2020-1485-F, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations by repealing Article 12 Windstorm Code and dealing with related matters.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Sanchez Sanchez. I'm from the Building Division, the Planning and Redevelopment Department, and I will be presenting today two ordinances. The first one will be regarding the Windstorm Code to repeal the Article 12 from Chapter 18. Buildings and Building Regulations by repealing Article 12 Windstorm Code and dealing with related matters.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Sanchez Sanchez. I'm from the Building Division, the Planning and Redevelopment Department, and I will be presenting today two ordinances. The first one will be regarding the Windstorm Code to repeal the Article 12 from Chapter 18. Next slide, please. Sorry?
Are you going to be explaining to us what your reasoning for coming to repeal that is?
Yes, but I send the presentation, so I'm not sure if...
Okay, is there any way you can share your screen then?
Sure.
Rick, is this something you're in favor of?
Yes, sir. Back in 2005, when the City of Brownsville adopted the ordinance which requires a windstorm inspection prior to issuance of a building permit, I don't think the impact on our residents was completely reviewed. We have many property owners in Brownsville that come in for small projects like carports or covers for their barbecue pits, and we require a registered professional engineer to perform an inspection, which can cost anywhere between $500 and $2,500. And so it's onerous on our property owners when they're dealing with small projects. The option is still there for property owner to seek a windstorm certification if they desire to purchase insurance from the Texas Windstorm Association. But there are other insurance providers, not an insurance agent, but my understanding is there are other insurers that do not require the certificate, and they still will provide the insurance. So given the hardship on many of our residents, I would recommend that we repeal the ordinance.
That sounds very reasonable.
I was gonna ask the same thing, so I'm glad Commissioner Neese asked, because I did have some concerns, Ms. Vasquez, you know, I mean, we've had some citizens with issues like this in the past that we've discussed, so I was wondering your rationale, and as long as you're recommending it, we understand it, then we can, we'll hear some more if Mr. Sanchez wants to present more.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just trying to, have you seen the presentation already, or a bunch of screens right now?
A bunch of screens.
Sorry, he missed.
I think the Director Vasquez's explanation makes a lot of sense.
Okay, is this one?
Maybe you can answer if there's any public comment. I don't see anybody going against it, to be honest.
It does, you and I, Commissioner, but just in case you want to present for the benefit of the rest of the commission.
I think if we could go to the meat of the presentation, and that's probably, that the, just go to the slide dealing with the wind design standards and what remains in place after the ordinance is repealed.
Okay, perfect. Which one? Sorry?
Previous slide.
This one. Okay, so back in 2005, there were some unanticipated consequences that when the ordinance was adopted, were not taken into consideration or were not clear. These ones were some increased cost to the residents for small projects, and there were some time delays due to the project registration and the windstorm that was going to be created by the engineer and inspection performed by the engineer. Also, here in the city, there's a limited number of engineers providing service. And one big point was that the insurance code didn't state that was a mandate required by the state to have it. So the purpose of the ordinance actually is repeal the windstorm certification from the building permit process. That is including that inspection that is performed by the engineer. Let me remind that there are some wind design standards that still need to be filed, that will still need to be submitted for review, but they will be according by the residential code or the building code as applicable. The difference is now that the drafters will have the options to use different codes or standards. They will be using the building code, the AC7, ICC600, the Woodwind Construction Manual, and the IC standard for cold form steel. Or they also will have the options to submit it through sign and seal by a registered professional engineer. So basically, they will have six different methods to do it right now, instead of only Depending on the type of construction that they're proposing. And although the ordinance will go into effect as soon as approved by City Commission.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? This is a public hearing, is there anybody here on this item? Hearing none, do we have a motion to close public hearing?
I'll move.
And a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We have a motion on the item.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Neese, we have a second.
Second.
Yes.
We have a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Public hearing item number two, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2020-1485-G, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 3, Building Code by adding Section 18-126 Amendment, International Building Code applicable to accessory structures and historic buildings and dealing with related matters.
Going to share the screen again. So the second ordinance I will presenting is regarding code amendment to the International Building Code or IBC. The proposed code amendments is to compile local amendments to the provision of the IBC to provide more flexibility to our citizens when they apply for building permit. This is through a streamlined process and to help the redevelopment of the community. There are two major sections that will be amended. One of them will be a modification of an existing section to provide clarification on detached accessory structure, and the second one is a new subsection that will be created within the code to increase the occupant load on historic buildings for classification purpose and the requirements to be met. The first subsection to be modified is to clarify the existing provision that the code has exempting storage sheds and similar uses to be exempt from permit. We're proposing to include pergolas, trellises, arboris, and gasebos. And also, we're going to increase the size limit for exemption from 120 square feet to 200 square feet. The second amendment or modification to the code will be add a new subsection. This one will be applicable to historic buildings, and intention is to increase the occupant load from 50 to 99 when classifying an assembly used to classify as a business occupancy. This is a more flexible occupancy, and we're allowed to be, to have less requirement. And if it effective, they will be upon approval of City Commission. Have any questions?
I have a, so first of all, I do want to commend you on the second one, and all y'all's work in cleaning up all the mess and all the codes, especially downtown. But on the one before that, is it not possible to get a permit to do the pergolas and all these other items? Or there is one, and you're exempting them?
We are exempting the type of this, the type of structure. Right now, the current code language only accepts storage sheds, playhouses, and similar uses. But we are trying to expand also this type of construction because they, they're not that big, and we are trying to give the opportunity to applicants to have this small project without a burden to go through the applicable permit. And they still need to comply, and they're welcome to come to our office, and we can guide them, making sure that they're going to comply with building codes and ordinance, but we're not going to be requiring the permit for that size of structure.
For up to 200 square feet.
Right, if it's over 200, yes, sorry.
Adds to the visual beauty of any particular historic building. So these are applicable to historic buildings, right?
This was in every, every type of construction. It can be historic, it can be new. This one will be applicable to all of them. The one that will apply for historic building is the consideration of classified, the assembly uses as business.
I got you.
Okay.
Good.
Do we have any other questions from the commission? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, for your work. I'm all about easing restrictions to make it easier for people like this, so thank you for that, and something like this, I think, helps, so.
I'll move to closing public meeting.
I was just gonna check, see if anybody was here. Commissioner first, really quick. This is a public hearing, is anybody here on this item? Very good. Commissioner Neese made a motion to close, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion passes, I have a motion on the item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Motion passes, thank you.
I was aye, but I had my computer on, sorry.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner.
Public hearing item number three, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2020-1675, granting a franchise license to Republic Services Incorporated, a publicly traded company for residential waste services, as well as certain recycling services based on the terms and conditions recited therein.
Mr. Mayor, this is City Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Do you all consider taking this out of order? I believe Mr. Navarro has a presentation in executive session in regards to this item.
Counselor. Yes, counsel, not a problem, we'll go ahead and move that to after executive.
And secondarily, Commissioner Tetro wanted me to, for, as noted, that she was abstaining from discussion and voting on that issue.
Okay, not a problem, thank you. So we'll go ahead and move to the items for individual consideration.
Items for individual consideration, item one, consideration and appropriate action, if any, authorizing the city manager to enter into and execute a carers relief funding agreement with the Brownsville Independent School District pursuant to their request for funding from the City of Brownsville under the State of Texas Coronavirus Relief Fund matching program.
So I don't know if Mr. Renal wants me to go ahead and speak on this, or I can go ahead and just kind of give a brief summary of what occurred last meeting. As y'all may recall, BISD did, did present to us, asking us to consider, I guess, providing some financial resources and some financial support for an initiative that they have for connecting certain students that don't have access to internet at home to further promote distance learning for this semester and beyond. And we had several questions and some items we needed to discuss. So this past week, we had a meeting, a follow-up meeting with Superintendent Gutierrez, as well as Dr. Cantu, Mr. Armides, Mr. Renal, myself, to discuss certain questions and certain issues that we had, and try and really forge and formulate a real partnership going forward. And we had a really, really productive discussion on some potential collaborations we can take on in the future, over the next couple of years. Certainly, the city's interest is, is in furthering a zoo master plan expansion. We need BISD's coordination and support for that in regards to Cummings and that campus. We also discussed BISD's continued workforce training programs, and whether the city could help further promote that and possibly even help finance that potentially through GBIK in the future on certain initiatives. We also wanted to discuss their plans for Performing Arts Center, and whether the city could assist with any facilities on that. So it really became a larger conversation and something I think went very well, and at the end of it, I think we, we agreed that we should have a joint meeting between BISD and the city. But at that point, I guess I can go ahead and hand it off to Helen, who can probably talk about the MOU itself, if you want, Helen, or Noel, either one.
Sure. Go ahead, Mel. Um, City Mayor and City Commission, we do have Dr. Timothy Cuff here from BISD representing them, because Dr. Gutierrez and Dr. Cantu are in their own board meeting right now. And so basically, those are the major points. What we felt is the request was under, they had a request for funding through the Coronavirus Relief Fund matching program, the CRF, and that's something that we would add to the MOU. Basically, the MOU is, is a meeting of the minds to determine what type of collaboration we can have with our major initiatives. And so not only this initial funding being part of that, BISD also is part of our initial overarching broad back, is the Digital Inclusion Plan, which is under a separate MOU. So this funding does require some sort of agreement, and we thought that the best way to do that is, is to memorialize it in a MOU, use that structure, identify the CRF, that this fits that need of that agreement. And we thought, well, because we're already entering into an MOU, well, why don't we talk about some of their major initiatives and ours, and have a larger conversation on how we can work together towards our major initiatives. And I don't know if Dr. Cuff, you want to say anything, but basically, I believe that's, that was the purpose of this MOU, not only to fit their, the needs of the agreement, the CRF agreement, but also to look and comment and strategize on what our major initiatives are going forward.
Really, I don't have anything more to add to that, but I think it's, I look at it as a win-win situation for both the city and BISD to form that partnership, to move forward in the future, and, you know, to look at it as a win-win for the kids in BISD and for the, the community as an entire community. And so I think it's a great way for the city and BISD to move forward, and I look forward in the future to, to working. I know that Dr. Gutierrez does, and all of our administration, working with the city and, and this endeavor. So a great, a great move forward, I believe.
Thank you, Doctor. And, you know, at the last meeting, there was some concerns about, about the partnership and what that really meant. So I think after our meeting last week, we were able to really discuss some more ways that we could, we could, not necessarily partner yet, but, but some collaborative, I guess some collaborative opportunities that we'll still need to continue to meet on. I think the real value is in a joint meeting and discussing some of these items with more specificity, which is why at this point, the city would commit to an initial amount under this proposal of 250 and possibly a phase approach, depending on what we can come up with and, and what we can discuss going forward. You know, the zoo and the broadband initiative that we're, that we're still working on. I think this, this is important to the city. The, even though the Wi-Fi is kind of more of a short-term solution, it's something that's necessary right now, that's the reality of it, and it is something that does benefit the city, and it does help us, you know, definitely short-term at least. So I appreciate your time, Dr. Cuff. If any commission members have any questions, please, go ahead.
I have a couple. So you're, have they committed to anything in reference to the Gladys Porter Zoo Master Plan at your meeting? And also, were there any other commissioners at the meeting that you're mentioning?
Commissioner, as to the, anybody else, no. And then on the commitment to, regarding the zoo, there was no firm commitment. There was some discussion, however, BISD says that that campus serves as a workforce training campus. So they couldn't just go ahead and turn it around that quickly or dispose of the, the campus that quickly, it was something that needed to be planned. So if they're gonna find another location, that needs to be planned, and that's one of the reasons that, that we discussed potential workforce development. And that's one of the reasons that that we discussed potential workforce development strategies and funding possibly, depending on the programs going forward, which would help them possibly relocate and/or fund some of these programs somewhere else.
Yeah, we've been talking about that for a long time. And there's another campus, might have been a quarter of a mile away. There's been, you know, no movement on that. So I'm very happy to see this collaborative joint meetings and all that. However, they came to us last week, or last week it was, for 566,000. So that was to buy equipment, basically, to implement Wi-Fi access. And you mentioned at that time that our plan is working on fiber optic and it's not including Wi-Fi. So it seems counterproductive to what we're working on already. Plus, the money for the equipment, if I can ask Dr. Cuff, is the equipment already purchased or are you planning to go purchase more equipment?
We have purchased the equipment in a bulk order, a big order at the beginning. And so we we do have the equipment here, but that money that we would receive would then free up some other money that we have, that we could put that money towards it, free up so we could purchase some other things through another fund.
Hasn't been purchased yet?
Yes.
Okay. And then the rest of the $750,000 is going to be used to purchase equipment?
Yes, that that has already been purchased. And your contribution of what I see, 250,000, would then be matched by the, would be matched by TEA. And so we would get, we would get a matching from TEA. And that would help our district tremendously.
You're asking for a million dollars, 250 upfront, and you say you haven't purchased the equipment yet, right?
We have purchased a bulk order, a one, we have purchased the devices, the laptops, the Chromebooks and hotspots.
Are we reimbursing you for what you purchased?
We're, we're putting your money back into the fund so that we can collect the 250,000 matching from the state and then we will reallocate that money out. It's gonna go out.
Okay.
Commissioner, if I can, let me let me explain at least, and Dr. Cuff, please correct me if I'm wrong. The, the reason that BISD asked us for the support was because they, if we support them, it, they're able to get a match from us. Or in other words, a match from the state through our support. So our support actually goes further than than it would if they were just the ones solely funding it.
What's the 750 for then? What is the 750?
The way this is structured, Commissioner, or the proposal at least here is we're committing, we would commit as a city to an initial amount of 250. The rest of it would be contingent on on some of these initiatives and whether we can agree on something, any, any sort of initiatives going forward. We're not committed to the other 750. It's, it's something that we would have to take up later as a result of just some of these discussions with BISD, if we can agree on anything else.
Problem is, you're the only one having the discussions with them. And and the other problem is, you didn't get anything from them and you're promising to give them 250,000 without even getting anything in return except having some joint meetings.
Well, Commissioner, me personally, I'm not, I'm not promising or committing to anything. This is just a proposal for the commission. And I was the only one there because that's just the way it happened. It wasn't my choice or anything. So it was a short notice thing and and the superintendent and Dr. Cantu couldn't commit to anything because they hadn't had a commission meeting, just like I could not commit to anything. This is just a proposed structure.
It appears that you committed to 250,000. That's what you're getting, that's what you're asking us to do tonight, isn't it?
I personally haven't committed to anything. It's up to the commission. I'm not writing a check.
And if I may interject, the way that the MOU was presented to us, when money is tendered, then you would the party would have to enter into a new agreement that would specify. This is exactly what is happening. So this is really only a basic framework of what we would like to have happen. Once we decide to go forward and actually commit to certain promises, then we will have to have separate agreements that are written and memorialized with with conditions and specifications. So this is just kind of like a basic framework, from what I've seen.
Yep, pretty much.
And what we need is this, we need this agreement, at least in writing, by, I believe, October 15th is the day. And that's just a show of support from the city.
Correct.
Um, if I may, this is more of just an opinion. Since I got elected, I have to say that some of the BISD open district might have been some of my best allies in getting things done. I have to give my hats off to Principal Aguilar Lopez, Principal Solisa Porter, Benita Yagan at Falk. They've been wonderful partners. And the fact that then, that this would broaden it up so that other commissioners could well, so there would be more of a citywide initiative. To me, this is, I'm so happy that y'all have come to the table and that I think only good things can come of this. So.
And I think if I might add, I think the initial thought would be that this is a way that the, that the school district can team up with the city. And then it becomes a win-win situation for for that. There's a lot of kids that that come to BISD that I bet your city employee, your city employees have kids that come to BISD. So, you know, we're, we're working with your kids that are, that are in the city, you know, working in various offices and various departments. And so your kids win, the kids win at this because they're the one with the devices and the hotspots that are working at home until we get everybody back to school. And obviously, that's the goal of everybody.
I don't want to come across as being against this, but it seems like it's in conflict with our other MOU on the accessibility to reach the digital divide. So I'm all for Wi-Fi and I'm all for all those kids having that. I'm just saying that it's going to be conflicting from the way I understand that our other MOU is working. So I hope that we can kind of integrate all that together.
And if I may counsel Attorney DeCoss, what exactly is this? Is this a binding document, this MOU, or if you can further clarify?
I think the way that it's structured, it is basically an agreement to agree. And it does have a couple paragraphs that basically say that that further agreements are necessary, basically. It will have to be reached before any of this is binding. And I would imagine all of those should be coming in front of the commission before, you know, final approval. So it's basically an agreement to agree, basically support for BISD. That's what it looks like at this stage. So any other agreements further down the line would have to be brought before the connection.
Okay. And I just want to reiterate, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Gou, were you to say something?
Okay. No, go ahead, finish. I had a question.
Okay. I just want to reiterate that I support this and we're all for getting these students what they need. But I just really want to make sure that the BISD understands this money is coming out of application that was meant for our constituents. You know, this is CARES Act money. So we just really have to make sure that if we are giving something, that despite BISD, you know, they're going to a majority election right now. No matter who comes in or no matter what happens, the city's not going to be left, you know, with an empty hand after giving.
My question for Dr. Cuff was, the equipment that you're purchasing is, or purchased, rather, is like laptops and iPads, right?
Yes.
That's the bulk of it. So those pieces of equipment are going to work, whether it's Wi-Fi or hard, broadband hardline, am I not right?
Uh, those devices are going to work. They have to have Wi-Fi and we have put but, for example, we put buses around the city so they can tap into that. And also too, we have bought a very large quantity of hotspots. And so if parents do not have Wi-Fi, they can pick up a hotspot along with the device that they've been getting at school and those hotspots will be good for one year. And so.
I understand that. I understand that. But what I was asking was, I mean, there are certain parts of the city that don't have Wi-Fi. I mean, like, are never going to have Wi-Fi, maybe near the border and stuff like that. So if, if there was a hard line into that home, these pieces of equipment could still be modified to work with it. Is, am I right?
Yeah, I believe so. If I'm understanding you correctly, yes.
Okay. And I would echo what Commissioner Tetro says, that we're serious about that collaboration regardless of who gets elected. And at least it's my, my intention to see a new era of meaningful collaboration with BISD moving forward.
Right. And I, and I believe our, our spirit is with you as well and to move forward in a, in a very collaborative effort. From what I'm, from what I'm hearing with Dr. Gutierrez and Dr. Cantu.
Dr. Cuff, if somebody weren't at their house and still wanted to study, say, going into the park or to some other area and they had access to a citywide Wi-Fi, they would still be able to accomplish their goals without having to do it through a hardwired house, right?
Yeah, I would believe so, yes.
And it could be at the school, it could be in the park, it could be it out anywhere, right? And that's the difference of having hardwired because you have to be in your house, whether you use a little hotspot in the house and connect to your Wi-Fi, or if you're just out on the bike trail and you want to have access.
That, that's true. And, and as I said before, we even set up buses where they and, and in actuality, they can go to our schools and park in the parking lot and they could still, they can pick up the Wi-Fi from our schools. So the, we're trying to give the parents and the kids every opportunity, what we can do for them to get onto the Wi-Fi and to do their work.
I, I have a question. Obviously, this is, this agreement's all going to be about momentum as we move, uh, we proceed through the election. But when do you think the first joint meeting would be, Mayor?
You know, Commissioner, for me, I'd want it to be soon. However, I think it might be probably prudent, being that there's an election in a month, probably to wait for that. I, I would, I mean, I'd listen to the commission or or Dr. Gutierrez, really. I'm open to doing it anytime.
October 31st, because normally our budget is approved October 1st. So that's, that's saying that at least we have a date to at least throw out or, or, you know, entertain a calendar where we can have, whether it's a biannual meeting or, or, you know, how many the commission, the mayor commission would like to have. But at least we could, it would be nice to be able to set a date to at least have initiate or oppose a calendar. Because I know all the calendars get filled up very quickly. So, you know, just at least some of the administrators of both BISD and City of Brownsville, we can look at our calendars and say, okay, these are the dates that seem reasonable, given all the other meetings that go on. And so that's why we, we tried to establish by October 31st of every year, which we would have and go ahead and formalize a calendar.
So I think the best approach then would be to get some, maybe Helen can coordinate with, with Dr. Cantu and get some possible dates. And then Lori can then pull the commission to see when they're available. We have any other questions or concerns from the commission?
I'm going to go out on a limb and say that honestly, the elections shouldn't matter because what we're proposing is for the benefit of the community. And so whatever we present should be supported by either board members that exist right now or incoming board members. We're just trying to get momentum. If we're, if the city's going to give a quarter of a million dollars to BISD, I mean, it's natural to expect something in return in kind, not just a sit-down meeting. So it's not like we're asking for unreasonable things. But I thought I'd put it out there.
As that is, I agree with that.
Yep, that's exactly the point. Okay, do we have any motions or any other concerns or comments?
Or I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Goloski. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Note my abstention, please.
Sir, thank you, Commissioner. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city commissioners.
Thanks, Dr. Cuff.
Okay. Good night. Have a good night.
Don't let your glass down, Dr. Cuff.
I'm gonna try to do my best to keep that momentum going, guys.
Thank you, Dr. Cuff.
Alrighty. Good night, folks.
Item two, consideration and absent on the 14th amended declaration of local disaster for public health emergency.
And myself reading everything out, we thought we would have bulleted points going over some of the changes. For example, the proposals of this 14th amended declaration of local disaster be effective for 30 days versus normally we, we approve for 14 days. So that would take us to November 3rd, 2020. Also, with regard to curfew, we would maintain the curfew. The Cameron County has our curfew until October 19th. And so we would be, we would coincide with their calendar. So if they further extend that, we would also further extend. And if not, we would just not have a curfew any longer. So that way, there is no conflict between the county and the city of Brownsville. We also included the farmer's markets ability to operate at 25%. I think the flea market has shown us that we can safely get people back to the flea market and which has many, many people. And we believe that the flea market, through their reopening plan, that they can also be safe and still allow for fresh vegetables and food for community. And then also, there was a change with regard to nursing homes that people may visit. Of course, they have to state-supported living centers, assisted living facilities, or long-term care facilities. Of course, in compliance with the Texas Health and Human Services Commission. And that's just to come up. Dr. Rodriguez, he can speak more to that issue. We have questions, but it's to come into compliance also with the governor's orders and the fact that they have also been closely monitoring many of those homes. That concludes my presentation.
Oh, Mayor, you're on mute. I don't see, I don't show that I'm on mute. Hello? Yeah, I'm not making here. Okay. All right. This, I'm not sure what's on the screen. Is this something to do with this particular item?
Please go back to the previous slide.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about proposed changes for the 14th amended declaration? Can't believe we're on the 14th amended one. My gosh.
And we're probably gonna get two of us pretty much.
Well, okay. Six, what, six months? No, almost seven. Okay. Do we have any motions?
Motion to approve. Just one thing. I'm glad that nursing homes and assisted living facilities are now going to be allowed to have visitors because I know that that's going to have a tremendous impact for the people who live there and their family members. But I would also like to remind people that if you're going to visit your loved ones, it's even more important that you be more responsible and take all precautions necessary to safeguard your health and the ones of your loved ones because you're going into an environment that is full of highly vulnerable people. So, but it's much needed that people have contact with their loved ones.
Thanks.
But I'm going to approve that, the amended order.
We had a motion to approve already, Commissioner. Do you want to second that? We have a second from Commissioner Goloski. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Did they leave the flea market at 25%?
Uh, yes, Commissioner.
You know, just to point out to our health department today, I, in regards to the flea market, I made a post about our numbers that are slightly climbing. And one of the complaints from many people, what that people were not using masks at the flea market, just to let the health department know that that's something very serious.
I was getting reports when, when the health department was monitoring it, I was getting reports that we had almost 100% mask usage. So I would ask Dr. Rodriguez to please follow up on that concern.
Yes, thanks.
I have a question. Well, we're amending, they do, or we are following the governor's, I guess, orders, right?
Yes, Commissioner. Yes, Commissioner. Yeah, I think these changes just apply to what was already existing, and we were already, we had language in there that stated that we were going to be in compliance with the governor's orders.
Perfect, thanks.
Are there any specific governor's orders regarding the flea market?
I'm not aware of any, Commissioner. Counsel, do you know?
No, not necessarily. We do have language involving congregation of people in amounts of, or attendance over 100, which are, will fall under the purview of the mayor in regards to approvals such things.
Are we treating them as a business or as a gathering?
I consider them a business, quite honestly, but...
You shouldn't restrict less than 50, if that's the case.
Well, the problem that we have here, Commissioner, is that it's all outdoors, so a lot of the language from the governor's orders specifically does not apply to outdoor businesses, and this could be considered one, and because of the sheer size of the property where the flea market sits, it's, you know, it could allow for much larger numbers, so I think it's in a completely gray area. I don't necessarily think that the orders stipulated are, go against, or are in conflict with the governor's order, and I think it does observe some of the requirements in regards to gatherings and outside.
We had a, we had a motion and a second already. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Please note my abstention.
Very good, Commissioner, thank you. Motion passes.
Item three, consideration and action to award bid number ACA-34-0420, the reconstruction slash expansion of the air carrier apron at Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport to IOC Company LLC in the amount of $7,617,56.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Brian Walker with the City Manager's Office and Aviation Director. This is an item that is being paid for through the recent grant awards from the FAA, this is going to be the Phase III demolition of the current terminal and paving of that area for aircraft parking to accommodate aircraft for the new terminal. This is, this was, has been presented repeatedly until we got the funding, so now we're here just to get this approved. We do recommend approval of this item.
I'll move to approve. Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Item four, consideration and action to award supplemental amendment number six to task order number two to Garber LLC in the amount of $116,380.
Again, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, this item is to extend a task order, as it says, to, for project management for this portion, this apron portion of this project. Again, it's also funded by that recent grant, and it's been presented on each of the spreadsheets we continue to bring.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five, consideration and action to award a contract for emergency response campaign COVID-19 services to LINK Strategic Partners Incorporated for the City of Brownsville. RFP number ERC-47-0720.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, this is Felipe Romelo, the Director of Communications and Marketing. This RFP is to consider LINK Strategic Partners to continue working with us for emergency communications. They have already helped us out tremendously in terms of getting rapid and accurate response communications in regards to COVID-19 messaging, and I think this is a tremendous partnership that we established with LINK. We've already seen, you know, the potential that we have in creating this partnership with them, and would get us, more importantly, would get us to establish communications during the holiday season, as numbers start to slowly climb, we really need to push out more communications sooner than later, so it's important that we establish this partnership, or this continued partnership with LINK Strategic. We go to the next slide, please. Below, this slide kind of shares some of the things that we have already established with them, which is the City of Brownsville Community Kit, they help with the BTX reopening framework, and a lot of our communications content. The next slide. The upcoming needs are, you know, one of the, you know, major campaigns that we see is, number one, is the COVID-19 holiday messaging that we want to push out for Halloween, Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years, and also, we're on the tellend of hurricane, of a hurricane season, so if that comes up, we have a partner that would help us get important messaging out as soon as possible, they're going to be available 24/7, and also help us with economic development, recovery messaging related to the effects that we've, for the businesses that have been impacted in regards to COVID-19. Next slide, please. And selected from the three consultants that submitted an application with the RFP, LINK was not only the highest rated in terms of the evaluation, but also the best benefit for the cost. And the next slide is, does the Commission have, Mayor Commission have any questions?
Can we go to the previous slide?
Yes, sir.
My, well, my question here, I didn't see the three proposals in the packet, I only saw the LINK information, so I was curious about the other two bidders, and how you came up with the estimated cost, because the monthly rate, let's say for LINK is $25,000, we see the other one's $5,050, I don't know if the, what the campaign cost part means, but I was just concerned about the cost, the $25,000 per month, because that's pretty pricey, I was wondering where that money's coming from, if it was budgeted already.
Mayor, this would be funding that would come from the CARES, the CARES Act, and then the selection, the per campaign, so if you see the slide, I5 has submitted, you know, per campaign, we're looking about a minimum of four to five campaigns that we need to execute, so if you look at that, we would be looking at almost the same amount in terms of the campaign cost, and then Tequila Group submitted an hourly rate, and this is based on 40 hours of work per week.
How often are you going to run those campaigns? You said four or five, you have four or five contemplated.
Yes, sir. Often are we going to run them? As soon as possible, sir, I think the...
Are you going to run all five the first month? Are you going to run like one the first month, one the second month, or how's that going to work out?
Well, we need to start immediately with the campaign, the messaging for Halloween and Thanksgiving, so we're going to start with Halloween. LINK has given us a monthly rate, which is just $25,000, it's not per campaign, it's total per month.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering, if you're going to do five campaigns, and it's going to be five months, for example, then we're going to be paying them more than $75,000, we're going to be paying them $25,000 a month for more than three months. I mean, it's a term contract, but there's no three-month term, it's open-ended, right?
Commissioner, this specific contract ends, it's pending on CARES Act funding, so this contract would end in December.
Is this money also going to be taken away from the other participants that were allocated previously? In other words, we're giving $250,000 to BISD and taking it away from other previous recipients that were allocated some money, and so is that what's going to happen with this money too?
Commissioner Nice, this was, this money has already been allocated, submitted to our finance department to get us through December.
As part of the allocations that were made under the CARES Act?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and there's nobody in your department that can provide this type of service? In other words, you do the campaigns, and you don't have anybody that can do that?
We have a limited staff, sir, and we're working on other projects as well, so this is something, it's a support system to help us specifically for emergency communications.
Yeah, I had the same question and concern, actually, because I think this is something that we need to handle internally in the future, so I fully expect this sort of stuff to be done internally going forward, unless there's some sort of issue with expertise or something, but I would fully expect this sort of thing to be done internally in the future.
Well, $75,000 would be enough to hire somebody that should be able to do this stuff, I would think.
I mean, in three months, you're spending somebody's entire salary, and I mean, at $75,000 here in Brownsville, that's a lot of money. I just, it really bothers me, the amount of money, just because it's CARES Act, and it, you know, came from where it did, and it didn't cost us anything, I think you have to be very smart with that money that you've given, and the 75 is just a lot for me to stomach, especially during times like this. And that's all I have to say.
Felipe, I have a question, is this a local company?
No, ma'am, this is a company based out of Washington, DC.
And what is their experience working in a Hispanic population along the Mexican border?
They have experience working on the border of Arizona, and also working in Austin, Texas. And they worked with us, and started, they started working with us in March.
Okay, so are they the ones that, I guess I'm a little fuzzy on, in terms of what exactly they do, do they like come up with the campaign slogan, do they develop the graphics, or, and then pitch it to you or us, or both, or do you tell them what you want said, and then they develop the graphics and such?
We generate the messaging in-house, so this is basically a support system, so we, I don't know, our department does not have any expertise in in-house designers. Our BTV staff have been helping with supplementing that, but their main focus is in the video part. On the graphic design part, we don't, we don't have a graphic design team, so a lot of the, a lot of the design and implementation, it comes from them. They've also helped us supporting in terms of getting us training up to speed, and so we're, like the mayor mentioned, is something that I do believe we should do in-house, but we got to be, you know, properly trained for it. So they have also provided resources in terms of professional development to train up our staff and make sure that we're at the level that we need to be to prepare for emergency communications, so that's something that we'll get.
Can they actually train a graphic designer, or does a graphic, you know, I don't know anything about graphic design, except that I don't know how to do it, so can they actually train a graphic designer, or does that person have to go to school to get particular skills?
That person specifically has to, you know, I think it's a skill set that you go to school for.
Have you just hired someone recently? Did you hire Gracie Cuntu, I think is her name, to help you all with marketing?
No, sir.
Maybe that was, no, I thought it was the city. Okay, I could be wrong, but now, what about C-Span, didn't we, aren't we spending $180,000 or $280,000 with them to do this type of work? Can't they do this?
Commissioner, C-Span's is helping us specifically for the marketing side of our, the tourism side that we're doing, so they are helping us right now with the developing the visit Brownsville campaigns, and they were not designated for emergency communications. They're also providing, also, let me mention that they're also helping us with Spanish translation and interpretation.
So I still had another question. So the, in terms of Spanish translation, I think we can find local partners that can do that easily and skillfully. Do they, so let's say you give them the slogan, and they create the graphic design, then did they push it out on social media, or do you guys push it out on social media? I guess I'm trying to understand the, I understand support work, I understand graphic design, I'm trying, and I understand it's a very unique time with a lot of emergency stuff going on, so it's a very unique situation, but I'm trying to understand the gap that they fill.
So they create, they help us create collaboratively with our input, in terms of the overall structure of a campaign, so we provide the messaging that's really, you know, the local messaging, and they also provide, you know, access to the messaging that's going on from a national and state perspective. So they have also, they work with other collaborative partners in terms of, at the state and city level, and they help us kind of connect the dots. You know, the one thing that this pandemic has taught us is the importance of, again, of having an accurate rapid response, and we depend on having trusted sources, you know, who can filter this, through this information in real time, so we consider them a, you know, a support system to help us get our communications out effectively and in a rapid manner.
So I'm not going to object because it's an unusual time, if it wasn't a pandemic, I would agree that you should be able to build a department to be able to have that, you know, all of what you need within it, but this is an unusual time, I would also say again, and I know I've said this to you before, you have very strong media partners with the School of Public Health that have been doing it for a long time, and messaging and translation into Spanish are the things that they do in their sleep, and so I urge you not to forget that in terms of filtering what's appropriate messaging on a national and state level, there's no better partner, and no better connected partner than those.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Commissioner.
Do we have any other questions?
I don't have any questions, I just have comments that I sat here through the rebranding of our logo, and that obviously didn't go too well, and so whenever I see these things, I just feel like people who are local have so much value, and I just truly, truly believe that just because you're from a big city doesn't make you better. I personally know companies from the RGV who are a lot better than some of these national people, and that's just my regret about this, is that the money's not staying local, and that we're not giving a chance to local talent, who obviously, in my opinion, is so much better.
Do we have any motions on the item?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second? Okay, no second, Counsel, does that mean the motion dies in, or?
It fails, yes.
Okay, motion fails, then, next item.
Item six, consideration and action to approve the 2021 City Commission meeting schedule. Mayor and Commissioner, you were given a more detailed calendar in your packet, but well, Yolanda just put these dates on the calendar so you could have a better representation of it, this pretty much follows, you know, along the same lines as our schedule for 2020, so we just needed to get your input or approval, whichever you want to discuss.
The only one that's different is November, but that's because of Thanksgiving, I guess, is that why we're not doing the 16th?
Yes, sir, this year, on our calendar for 2020, on November and December, we have meetings on the first two Tuesdays.
Okay.
Thanksgiving and Christmas holiday.
Okay. I don't have any concerns.
Everybody make sure that none of your kids' birthdays are on these days.
I'll move to approve that we, or I'll move to approve the proposed calendar.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Lori. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Lori.
All right, our next item is executive session. Item one, attorney consultation pursuant to section five fifty-one point zero seven one of the Texas Government Code to receive legal advice in connection with the grant of a franchise license to Republic Services for residential waste management and related legal issues.
Just to note, to make notes, City Secretary will be exiting the meeting and leaving completely at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Tetra, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Just approached by by Mr. Navarro, who's the attorney assigned to this item. He said that he placed the item in executive session as a placeholder in case you all had any questions. If you if you complete with the presentation, he will be here in case you need to go to executive session.
Well, I think the plan, counsel, is to go to executive. That way, if there's any questions to be asked, they can be asked there as to any legal concerns. So I think it's best to to go that way.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Hey, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed? Okay, we're in executive session. Thank you.
Okay, it is now six twelve and we're going into executive session.
So we have all but Commissioner Neese and Commissioner Tetra that have left the meeting. So it is now 6:45, we're back in open session. We have, okay, let me see where I'm at here. A possible action on any items discussed in the executive session, and that was the public hearing item, which was item number three in public hearings, public hearing and action on first reading on ordinance number 2020 to 1675, granting a franchise license to Republic Services Incorporated, a public trading company for residential waste management services as well as certain recycling services based on the terms and conditions recited therein.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. This is just a quick recap of some of the progress that we have done for the residential solid waste franchise application. Next slide, please. So just a couple of the milestones that we want to identify today is that around June timeframe is when we actually got the general franchise ordinance approved. Then around mid-Junes, when our applicant submitted it to the city of Brownsville, but because of the COVID emphasis and some of the other demands that the city had at the time, it did delay a little bit the process. However, we're excited to let you know that we are here today to provide a couple of options to City Commission. Next slide, please. So residential solid waste, as you know, is one of the opportunities that we have where we can protect the public health and safety of the community through identifying partnerships throughout different partners. So for example, this particular partnership, we actually have the ability to provide services to the community on a weekly residential solid waste pickup and monthly brush bulk waste pickup to include at this time recycling locations at our soft most, police substation and on Alton Gore at one of our fire stations, both conducted on Mondays and Wednesdays from 7:00 to 11:00 a.m. Disaster cleanup assistance is something also we've requested and they would support. Next slide, please. So some of these service options that we really wanted to discuss today was first and foremost, I believe that the recommendation to maintain currencies levels would be that no additional or modifications to services would occur. There is two options though, recycling options. Option one would be to modify our recycling locations for every Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., which would actually include one per district. The second option would be to do a mandatory citywide curbside recycling program with a 95 gallon cart that would have some co-mingled curbside recycling service with pickup every other week. So again, the second option would be for every other week pickup. Next slide, please. So we really want to talk about the possibilities and scenarios because in the event that we do go with option two, which is a full recycling program, there would be variances between the 50% to 80% success rate. So if we obtain 50% participation, we can anticipate that the total price would be roughly 5.26. That's what we're anticipating would be the low end of the spectrum or the most that we would have to charge the community. In the event that we would actually exceed to roughly 80%, we would see that rate drop to around $4.78. Next slide, please. So again, this is more of a recap of the service options. Again, if we just maintain our services, there's no actual fee that modifies. In the event that we go with option one, where we would allow the community to expand to four sites throughout the community or one per district, that would be roughly a 40 cent increase. In the event that we went with option two, it would actually be an increase of 5.26. We want to emphasize invariable because like we talked about in the other slide, it just depends on how the success rate is. So we wanted to provide the least success rate, just to be transparent. Next slide, please. So here we have the fee schedule, like we had talked about right now. We have the city rates, we have all the different rates that compute to the 2272 on the top table. So again, it would be 1826. And then of course, we also have a landfill fee that would come out to 2272. Of course, once you start adding an additional card, those fee increase. And then of course, the backend, in the event that we need unusual accumulation of landscape brush per hall, that would be 423 to the residents. Option one, again, would be with the option where we would only have the once a weekend per district. So that's that 40 cent that we talked about. So that would equate to 2312. And as you can see, as you obtain additional services, those rates would increase as well. And then lastly, we go to the final option, which is option two. This is the one that we would incorporate the citywide platform for the community, where we would also do the same thing. But of course, at the 50% success rate, we would be looking roughly at 2798 for the entire community. And just a quick note that the landfill fee is separate from the computations of the rates for the residential solid waste services. Next slide, please. So again, to the roadmap, to the roadmap, these are some of the areas that we have here. So depending on the direction, we may be able to move forward, of course, until we get the second reading. Of course, until we get the second reading, in the event that we do not get any feedback, then we will leave as is. In the event that we do get any feedback, then we would incorporate that into the next reading that we have. And then depending on the implementation strategies, then that would impact when we go live versus some of the different scenarios we talked about. Next slide. And that concludes the presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, Mr. Bennett, at this point then, we would select the, the services, uh, through a motion. Is that what you're saying? We have options. So we select the services at this point then, on the recycling specifically?
I would have to defer to Rick, sir, to be honest, but I believe the answer would be yes.
I, I, I would suggest that you do, uh, that you select the option that the commission wants to do as a stub motion or, or mini motion to the larger motion to adopt the franchise ordinance on first reading. We have left those items open in the draft so that you can make the selection. Both of these options, uh, Republic has, has made available. So we know that those are acceptable to them, but the commission needs to decide, you know, what it wants to do. So I would handle that, Mayor, procedurally as a motion directed to the options.
Thank you.
Can you go back to the slide where that shows the, um, the option of a locate, a pickup? What's it, the pickup locate, location for every district? Which, which one was that?
Yes, ma'am, that was option one. I was pointing it.
The, the resident takes the stuff, the stuff to a location, but there's one location in every district?
Yes, ma'am.
And that increases by 40 cents?
Yes, Commissioner, that's correct.
And is that 40 cents something that the city pays or the resident pays?
That, that would, that would go to the resident, Commissioner, a 40% increase to their monthly rate.
And that, that's option one then, right?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any other questions?
I just have a general comment, um, on, on the ordinance. Um, one thing I would like to ask from, from staff is a, uh, presentation of the rate comparisons that were done, um, with other cities um, in the valley, uh, for our second reading, um, so that the public can be aware that, uh, these rates that are presented in this presentation are competitive.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Cowan, we can do that. We'll, we'll bring that back next meeting. And we did assess against all the larger communities that have either upsource or in-house residential solid waste.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any motions? Anybody with a motion? Now, I'll go ahead and I'll make the motion to, to approve option one.
Let me just clarify.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we have a motion and a second to approve option one. Uh, Commissioner, if you can. Commissioner Goloski, do you have something to say?
To clarify, so then there's only, there's really only two options. Either like going to a location in your district or, um, curbside, right? And...
Correct. And the curbside would have been once every two weeks with an additional fee, average about $5.
And the district locate, drop off is every weekend or?
Mr. Bennett?
Yes, Commissioner, it would be every weekend and we would designate that specific location.
Okay.
Yes, I would also note, Mayor, that we will, we can work with the commission on identifying, uh, we'll have staff suggestions, but to find the best placement for, uh, the two new areas. Thank you, Mr. Renal.
Was there a second already?
Actually, this is a public hearing, so is there anybody here on this? I forgot. So is there anybody here on this item? Okay, so now we need a motion to close public hearing. Uh, does anybody want to make that then?
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close, I have a second. We have a motion and a second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, now do we have any motions on the item itself? I have a motion. Commissioner Goloski, second. Commissioner Goloski, you still seconding that?
Yes.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second, uh, any discussion?
I just have a quick thing to add. Um, I, I typically would be in favor of option two, but during this time of uncertainty, I, I don't think it's fair to put a, an additional burden on the residents, especially our poor residents. So I just want to throw that out.
I agree, that's why I hesitated.
I agree too, and, and I think all of us wanted at least to explore, uh, citywide recycling. And the issue here became that the cost was something that we didn't want to impose on the, all the citizens. An extra $5, especially in certain districts, like let's say Commissioner Goloski's district, uh, was going to be something that was going to impact, impact people. Uh, even though some people would be willing to pay $5, I think my concern, and I know some of y'all's is just that I didn't want to impose a mandatory fee on people. Uh, and this, I think this solution, option one, allows those that want to participate in recycling to go ahead and do it. And, and it's in each district, which is great. So I appreciate, uh, them coming up with this option. So, um, unless there's any further discussion, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. And, uh, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
You have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And the second, uh, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, it's early.
6:57.
10 minutes.
Bye-bye.
Everybody have a good night, thanks.
It is now 6:57 and the City Commission meeting has ended.